Give everyone a few more moments here. Hopefully, they'll all jump in. And it's happening. It's happening quickly. I see a few more connecting. Wait another minute here or so. Okay, I think we will get started so that we're not here too late into the evening. Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call the meeting to order. Mr. Colavita, will you call the roll, please?
Ms. Driver.
Here.
Ms. Grillo.
Present.
Mr. Herbert.
Here.
Ms. Lindthorst.
Here.
Ms. Long.
Yes.
Mr. Mason. Ms. O'Reilly.
Yes, I do.
And Ms. Williams.
Is. Zero, zero, one, seven.
Julie. I'm sorry, Bob. Was that all board members accounted for?
I didn't hear Anita. I think I.
Present.
Okay, we got everybody. We have a quorum.
All right, wonderful. Thank you very much. The New Jersey Open Publics Meetings Law was enacted to ensure the right of the public to have advance notice of and to attend the meetings of public bodies at which any business affecting their interests is discussed or acted upon. In accordance with the provisions of the Act, the Hopewell Valley Regional Board of Education has caused notice of this meeting to be published by having the date, time, and place thereof communicated to the Times and the Trentonian on February 23, 2021. This meeting notice was also sent to Comcast Cable and Verizon FiOS. Will you please join me in the flag salute? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I'd like to thank everyone for being with us this evening. It's great to see everyone. Just going to share some opening remarks with you, and then we will get going. I'd like to thank our local municipal leaders and staff for taking time out of their busy schedules to be with us this evening. We appreciate your interest in the work of this district and board during this, the district's second annual review of the budget for the valley's municipal officials. We hope that tonight's discussions provide. We hope that tonight's discussions provide some perspective on how the administration has gone about constructing this year's budget, and that you may clearly recognize the major drivers of the district's financial plan as the board moves forward in its budget process and deliberations. The district's budget provides a roadmap for how the district and board set out to support our primary mission, to support student achievement and well-being in a manner which supports all district stakeholders and is fiscally responsible to the taxpayers of our municipalities. On behalf of the board, I'd like to thank each of you for your service in your respective towns in this year of incredible challenge. We appreciate your leadership, your clear communication, and your collaboration with the district on pandemic-related matters, highlighted through the strong relationships and support provided by the district by your Departments of Health. We also note other efforts born of our communal partnerships, such as the recent two-day community vaccination clinic, which amazingly resulted in the vaccination of approximately 900 members of our community, and through our shared efforts to support those facing food insecurity in the valley, which, in my opinion, promote the ideals and best aspects of public service. I look forward to collaborating with you on future efforts for the good of our community. As we move into this evening's presentation, I'd like to thank Dr. Smith, Mr. Colavita, and the many other administrators who have spent countless hours working on and fine-tuning this budget, as well as our dedicated Finance Committee members led by Chair Adam Sawicki for their efforts. I also thank the remaining board members for their attention, insights, and questions throughout this months-long process. We have some work left to do yet, but the finish line is in sight. Mr. Colavita and Dr. Smith, do you have power? My lights went out in here, but I think I think it's just in this room.
That's a motion sensor in there.
Okay.
If you wave your arms, wave your arms, the lights will go back on.
Perfect timing. Okay, I'll do that in a moment. Before I do that, I'm going to try to lead us in some very quick introductions. I think it's important that we all know who each other is as we as we move into the session. So I will quickly go around the Zoom and say your name, and please just say who you are and either which municipality you're with. If you're an administrator, what your role is, or as a board member, what town you serve. So Kristin, you're at the top of my screen.
So hi, I'm Kristin McLaughlin from Hopewell Township, the Hopewell Township Committee.
Thank you. Mr. Colavita.
Good evening. I am the Business Administrator Assistant Superintendent for the School District.
Thank you. Thank you. Dr. Smith.
Tom Smith, Superintendent of Schools. Happy to be here.
Ms. Williams.
Hello, Anita Williams Scagliano, a school board member. Great to be with you this evening.
Mr. Kuchinsky.
Thank you, Kevin Kuchinsky, Hopewell Township Committee. I will just note for the record that we officially noticed this also as an official meeting of the Hopewell Township Committee, since we have a quorum on the call. Thank you for inviting us. Look forward to a productive discussion tonight.
Thank you. Thanks for being here. Ms. Stuhler.
Hi, I'm Deborah Steeler. I'm a borough councilwoman from Hopewell. Glad to be here. Thanks for including us. And we also have a quorum from Hopewell Borough, so I guess it's an official meeting as well. Ryan, you might know the official word today.
Wonderful. Thank you, Ms. Steeler. Ms. Blake.
Hi, sorry, Julie Blake. I'm on the Hopewell Township Committee and currently serving as mayor.
Thank you. Mr. Mason.
Hey, John Mason. I'm on the board from Hopewell Township, and I'm a.
Thank you. Mr. Sawicki.
Yes, Adam Sawicki, a school board member from representing Hopewell Township.
Thank you. Ms. Long.
Hi, Jenny Long, school board member for Pennington Borough.
Thank you. Dr. Therese.
Hi, Rosetta Therese, Assistant Superintendent of Curriculum and Instruction.
Thank you. Mr. Fossil.
Chris Fossil, Hopewell Borough Councilman.
Thank you. Ms. Smith.
Good evening. I'm Tana Smith. I'm Director of Human Resources for the Hopewell Valley School District.
Thank you. Ms. Driver.
Hi, I'm Andrea Driver, school board member. I represent Hopewell Township.
Thank you. Ms. Donardo.
Good evening. I'm Paulette Donardo, Director of People's Services for the district.
Mr. Herbert, I think we already had you, but I think you jumped around on the screen. No? Did you get a chance yet? Okay, go ahead.
No, I'm Bill Herbert, and I'm a school board member representing Hopewell Township.
Thank you. Ms. McAuliffe.
Hi, I'm Samara McAuliffe. I'm a member of council in Hopewell Borough.
Thank you. Mr. Kennedy.
Ryan Kennedy, Hopewell Borough Council, and also with Samara, Hopewell Valley High School, class of 1998.
Wow, well, that's great. Wonderful. Thanks. Ms. Grillo.
Hi, Jess Grillo, school board member representing Hopewell Borough.
Thank you. Ms. O'Reilly.
Hello, Debbie O'Reilly, school board member representing Hopewell Township.
Thank you. Mr. Ruger.
Hi, I'm Michael Ruger. I'm a member of the Hopewell Township Committee.
Thank you. Ms. Peters Manning.
Thank you, Courtney Peters Manning, member of the Hopewell Township Committee, and this year serving as deputy mayor.
Thank you. Mr. Lawver.
Hi, Joe Lawver, Mayor of Pennington Borough.
Thank you. Mr. Snyder.
Good evening. George Snyder, acting administrator, director of public works for Hopewell Township. Thank you for inviting me tonight.
Thank you for being here. And Ms. Heinzel.
Hey, everybody. I'm Eileen Heinzel. I'm the Pennington Borough Administrator, and I'm also happy for the invitation. Thank you.
Thank you for being here. I hope I didn't miss anyone, but if I if I did, please feel free to speak up. And if anyone joins us, we'll add them in as well later. And without further ado, I will pass the baton to Dr. Smith to present the district's budget. Thank you all for being here.
All right. Thank you very much. Welcome, everyone. Those of you who've been around for a while remember that Bob Colavita and I used to visit each municipality with our budget presentation, but that was after the budget was struck. And in conversations with a lot of leadership, really felt that they would like to see the budget prior to it being struck, so they could understand what some of our decisions were and provide some feedback. We started this new opportunity last year, and I think it was well received, so it's part of our new tradition. And I think by the numbers of folks who are attending this evening, hopefully you'll find it worthwhile. So we have a budget presentation that we'll go through. As President Lindthorst said, we are still in budget discussions. So just to give you a quick idea of where we are, the board, after this meeting, the board has their work session. At 7:00 PM, they will continue to review and discuss the budget. The budget, our preliminary budget, must be submitted to the county superintendent for approval. That will be reviewed and hopefully approved by the board next Monday, and then sent to the county superintendent. Then we continue with our budget discussions, and ultimately, our final budget review and public hearing will take place in April, at the end of April, the 25th, and then that will be submitted to the state moving forward. So what you're seeing tonight is a draft of a draft of a draft budget. As Deb said, there's still discussion taking place. The finance and facilities meeting met as soon as, or most recently, as this afternoon at 4:00 PM to continue our budget discussions. Ultimately, there's good news in our budget, and you'll see that this evening. And I don't necessarily want to give it away yet. It's our big part, but I ask you just to humor me. I've cut down my presentations about the importance of the school district, so I do only have a few slides, but I like to remind everybody why we're here. Our sole reason, so my sole reason for here, and I've been here 12 years, is to educate the students of Hopewell Valley to the best possible education that we can possibly provide them. So without further ado, I'm going to share my screen, and we will go from there. Give me one second. Our high security has signed me out of our Google Doc.
It's good to know that our security efforts and our greening are all coming into play during this meeting.
Yes, exactly. We're back in business. I will share my screen. This is usually where I say my Director of Technology's name in vain, but I will. Frame from that.
Tom, I have it up if you want me to just share it.
I'm back up now. Those of you who have children in our district, one of the things they might lament about is our security with our Google platform, which is a good thing. And if you are idle for a certain period of time, it will sign you out. So I believe everybody can see that. So this is our March 8 budget discussion. So a reminder that this is a discussion. Nothing has been set in stone. And as I mentioned, this evening, we will be continuing our discussion. Something I just think it's important to recognize is the mission of our school district, and it's one that was created by residents of this valley, including parents, teachers, students. Why, what we want out of our students, what we want to do as a school district. I think we do a very good job at this. I also think there's an opportunity for us to revisit this mission statement as things change, and we've talked about that. But really, our our goal is to provide a comprehensive, caring, educational experience which nurtures unique talents of each individual, creates fulfilled socially responsible lifelong learners, develops competence and capabilities to face the challenges of a rapidly changing world, and promotes a culture of respect which values diversity. And it's important to note that these words were written years ago, so our commitment to diversity and valuing diversity is something that's been ingrained in our fabric. And as partners, we will provide sufficient resources and talented, committed staff to fulfill all of this. And I think we have at least two graduates, I think I heard, well, actually, I think, including our board members, we have several graduates on tonight. So hopefully, you've felt that we've worked to fulfill this message. Quick facts, we have 3,400 students. We transport pre-COVID about 3,000 students every day. We have eight buildings, including six schools, one admin building, one maintenance building, including our transportation, 417 teachers, and 255 staff members, 24 administrators. And those of you who follow along, we are I in the district factor group, although they're moving away from that. Things that make us unique, we have small school sizes. If you compare us to some of the other schools in the area, it's not uncommon for them to have 800 student elementary schools. Ours are small, and with that, you have principals who know the names of every student, no families, no siblings. We have small class sizes, even outside of COVID. Extraordinary number of student programs and opportunities for our students really living up to our mission statement. Student support services, we're very proud of what we've done to try to support our students in their social, emotional learning, highly experienced teaching staff, and programs that significantly exceed these statements. Our arts programs are second to none, our music programs, world language library, nursing, the counseling services that we have and we provide to our students, really are things that we are incredibly proud of. You know, here, what do we do? We help students achieve their goals, so whatever path they choose. Up in the upper left-hand corner, you see we are one of the few districts, certainly high-performing high schools, that continue to have a working auto shop. Again, snapshot of what we're doing is President Lindthorst mentioned, our commitment to our community. Return on your investment. Even if you don't have students any longer in the school district, we continue on our trajectory of improvement, just kind of going back, and not that we're numbers people, but 12 years ago when I first arrived, our high school, I think, was ranked number 40. Now we are at number 16. Our SAT scores are amongst the best in the state. So again, aside from that, I think for the most part, we have very well-rounded students. Kids are having a positive experience in our schools, and that's one of the things we take a lot of pride in. All right, so that's, again, I just asked you as we go through the budgets, to reflect on really our mission, why we're here, what we've done to improve our schools, and also improve the lives of the students that we serve. The budget tonight is where we come to, I guess, the latter part of our budget development. We have been discussing the budget since the summer. The early process, you can see this information on our website, but all of these meetings have been in public. We've looked at the in-depth discussions of our high-ticket items in terms of staffing, in terms of curriculum instruction, in terms of special education, transportation, technology, and looking at that. But we also meet with all of our budget managers or building principals and looking at our budgetary goals, giving them goals to bring in their budgets. As we get into the winter, we, district-wide, we compile our budget. We review all those budget requests. The Board Business Operations Committee reviews different state aid scenarios, what potentially where we will land. We will wait for our state aid numbers, which actually just came in, as we can finalize our proposal. And as I mentioned previously, where we are in our process, next Monday will be step one in terms of our official development and submission of our formal budget. But again, we've been talking about the budget for months. Some budget highlights. I know that we all like to get to the numbers, but I will share this with you. This budget maintains all existing programs and services, and we'll talk a little bit about this, but we've had systematic staffing reductions really over the last 10 to 12 years, in line with our enrollment. Something that's very important for us is our second biggest budget driver. We were able to contain costs for our health care and benefits for our staff members at zero. So when you're talking $16 million, a 0% increase is one that we can really be happy with. And as I mentioned previously, we are coming in with a tax levy of 0%, and our operating budget is under cap. Many of you know this, but just to go over it, where our money's come from, we recognize and we understand, and we bear the burden of 86% of our budget comes from local tax levies. And that is not unique to Hopewell per se, but it is something you should recognize, that we receive some of the lowest state aid in the county. I think last time we checked, we were the lowest after the changes, although we're expecting some increases. We're hopeful that that will increase, but still, the majority of our budget, 86%, comes from local taxes. Our fund balance is what we put into the budget from previous year's leftover expenditures, and we do, we charge staff members tuition to bring their children to our district. We also accept a number of out-of-district tuition students, and we do receive interest on some of our monies. As I mentioned, state aid accounts for about 4% of our budget. School choice aid, which I'll talk to you a little bit, is important, but it's only, you know, less than half a percent, and debt service aid is below that. So again, just so you can see where our money comes from. Not a secret to anybody, but good, and these are rounded figures, but 75% of our annual appropriations are salaries and benefits. 13% are operations and maintenance, transportation, technology. 10% goes to debt service, direct service, and capital outlays, and 2% goes to student support programs and co-curriculars. You can see the breakdowns also on this slide. This slide will be posted on our website, and if you're so willing, you can watch the presentation again at 7:00 PM. We'll go over it. I think everyone is aware of kind of the shifts in enrollment that have taken place over the last 10 years as our students age and our development's age of where we are. We have decreased about 582 students, or 15%. We knew this was happening. Actually, I will say, we actually, according to demographer, the demographer felt that we would be far lower than where we are at this point. So we have had discussions with township about redoing our demographic study, and it's time for us to look at that. Something I think it's important just to look at also is typically our first grade enrollment. Something I think it's important just to look at also is typically our first grade enrollment. Um, and that is because a lot of our families continue their children in kindergarten. Um, in the private kindergartens for a variety of reasons. Um, but in first grade is when a lot of students come back. So that typically gives us a, a stronger number. This year, however, uh, I give you the actual number, but, um, I do believe there's a lot of, um, changes and decisions that have been made in terms of either homeschooling or continuing in their, um, their current, their previous programming, um, or private schools because of COVID-related, um, situations and perhaps our schedule. So we're, are, um, expecting a change in that over the summer, assuming social distancing guidelines relax. There's something you're aware, you should be aware of is what have we done to control, uh, costs? As I mentioned, health benefits, we moved, um, to become self-insured. We did that a couple of years ago. With that, we've experienced two years of a zero percent increase. As I mentioned, that's about a sixteen million dollar price tag. Special education, um, we've done a lot of work, um, to return students from out-of-district placements to what I would consider stronger and better, uh, programs in a least restrictive environment, meaning their home school. Um, that comes at not only a benefit for the student, but a benefit for our, our district and our taxpayer. Um, something else you should be aware of, as I mentioned previously, is we've been reducing staff. Um, over the last ten years, for example, our elementary class sections have been reduced by twenty-one percent over the last ten years. We reduced three teams, uh, at Timberlane. Um, we've also reduced our administration over the last twelve years by eighteen percent. So you go back, uh, our enrollment reduced about fifteen percent. We've actually, uh, reduced, um, in excess of our enrollment, um, in terms of those, um, uh, good class sections and also administration. Something else you should be aware of is where we participate in the school choice program. Although we weren't, uh, approved for all the seats that we asked for due to some timing issues. Um, we, some of those excess seats that we had available to us as part of our, um, student reduction, we were able to allow students from outside of Hopewell to attend, and we get paid for that. And you'll see a little bit of that in a second. Um, technology, I think, uh, those of you who are aware of technology kind of gotten sleeker over the years. We've moved to a single platform. When I first arrived, we had Apples on the elementary level and, uh, Dell or PCs on the secondary level. Um, I have an Apple, it's a very good machine, however, they're very costly. Um, so we've moved towards one single platform. Um, and we've actually moved more towards Chromebooks, um, and the Google environment. So rather than paying for, uh, Microsoft licensing, um, and also, uh, virtualizing our servers and storage. Um, a lot of the, uh, you know, our email and some of our other stores used to be physically stored onsite in servers are now, um, being stored up in the cloud. Uh, this year, um, obviously we've had some COVID-related savings, transportation, we've had no field trips. Athletics has not, was significantly reduced. Um, so our buses aren't going anywhere. Uh, energy consumption, our, our buildings, we are have not rented out or are having, uh, late practices as we have in the past. So our buildings are closed early and we're able to reset our, um, reset our energy, uh, our HBAC. As I mentioned, the inter-district, um, public school choice program, it's important to notice that this is something that we did voluntarily, not only to provide opportunity, um, for students, but also as a, as a method of funding for our district. And this year alone, that additional funding will bring in three hundred and two thousand dollars, almost three hundred and three thousand dollars. And that's annual. Um, so I think it started about a hundred and seventy-six thousand dollars. And that comes from the state, that comes from the government. Um, so that's additional monies, um, that come into our district, um, to support those students. And we have twenty-two students who are participating in that program. Um, as Deb started out this, it's been a, you know, a, a year. Um, so, you know, there's lots of things that we're looking at. Um, we're looking at summer programming for learning loss. Will it be required by the state? These are uncertainties we have to look at. Will class size reductions continue? Where will, um, the state, um, give us some guidance on social distancing requirements? Um, right now, I think many, uh, you may or may not know, but the board authorized the additional staffing on the elementary level to keep our class sizes low, which enabled us to bring students back, um, five days a week. Um, big, uh, another big question mark, will remote instruction be required next year? Not by us, but by the state, will that be an option for parents? Um, large-scale events, um, will we need tents to, to make these accommodations for students? Will we be able to use the PAC Center, things like that? Athletic and extracurricular transportation, will that resume, uh, as it was? Uh, energy's consumption, we will see an increase. We know that as building use expands. Um, and something else, whether you're aware of it or not, we have been discussing the research on start times. Um, and the potential impact on transportation for that. That means, uh, the research is quite clear and starting our high school at a later time for our students. We start at seven forty-five. Um, could we start later and possibly flip-flop with the elementary? Um, so there's a couple of, uh, options on the table that we're discussing, no decisions have been made yet. But one or some of the options could, um, mean additional transportation to make sure that happens. So at this point, now we get to the money and I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Colavita, who's going to take us through, um, the proposed budget dollars and cents, and we'll wind this up at the very end.
Thanks, Tom. Um, just, I'm gonna try to run through these quickly so we allow time for questions, um. At the end, this is just, uh, showing our three funds, our general fund, our special revenue fund and our debt service fund. General fund is essentially our, our basic operating expenses. Special revenue fund is, uh, grant money received from the state and federal government to handle, um, some of our, uh, special education tuition and Title I programs. And obviously our debt service fund is what funds our, uh, large-scale improvements. Um, most recently, the high school addition at the Central High School. Uh, again, our expenditures must equal our revenues. So we have revenues that come from local, state and federal sources. Our local revenues equal, what happened? Some of it, okay. Um, local sources include, um, our tax levies, uh, miscellaneous revenues such as tuitions and rental fees and the use of fund balance, uh, that we'll talk about a little later on. Uh, state aid sources again come from our, uh, the state money, the state, uh, promises us and all, as well as debt service relief towards our bonding and federal monies cover again those, uh, special revenues for, uh, special like tuitions and Title I. Move ahead. Okay. And again, this is just, uh, how our revenues are, are divided up. Uh, we talked about fund balance, that's a local revenue, our tax levies, capital reserve monies. This is money that we're actually depositing into the capital reserve and then withdrawing to help pay down our debt. We'll get into that shortly. Our state aid monies. Um, miscellaneous revenues, we spoke about federally again, this just gives a, a more detailed breakdown of the revenues. Okay, Tom. These are some of our major drivers. Um, our regular instructional program includes everything from classroom experience, uh, special, uh, extracurricular activities, athletics. Um, all those things that go into basic general instruction. Our special education involves, uh, those special classes that we have for students as well as our out-of-district tuition placements and the staff members that support these, um, this group of, of students. Our benefits include everything from health benefits to professional, uh, professional development expenses for our staff members and tuition exercises, our, uh, PERS, pension contributions for certain staff members, workers' comp insurance, um, as well as, um, FICA payments. Central office services include the offices essentially that run, uh, this, uh, the admin building, the superintendent's office, business office, human resources. Um, central services to support the district, transportation, uh, our operating, operations and maintenance department. Capital outlay, again, there's a notation at the bottom that says there is actually in that number, it's slightly inflated due to the mechanics of the budget software, but there's one point six million dollars of surplus out of this year's budget, our current budget, to be placed into next year's budget to support our debt service. To get to that number that Tom mentioned earlier. So in essence, we have a, a round of three percent increase to our, uh, total budget for next year. And the slide that I guess everybody's been waiting for since the beginning. Um, pointing out at the very bottom there, we have a zero percent increase to our tax levy. Our total tax levy is combined of the general fund, which is what is, uh, being approved each year. And our debt service fund, which is approved when referendum are passed. Um, we are showing two scenarios right now, an A and a B. Uh, the board woke is, as Tom, uh, Dr. Smith said, we were continuing to discuss, um, options. And we have two options, both yield a zero percent increase to the tax levy, uh, to the taxpayer. And Tom? Okay. And in our, uh, budget, we do have, in addition to the money from federal and state governments, as well as our own tax levy, there is additional monies that need to be inserted into the budget to balance it out. And we are using three point five million dollars worth of identified surplus. Uh, we, in the two scenarios, we are putting, um, there's a, uh, a flex, a flex, a flex there, uh, but about three point five billion dollars is being used, put into the budget to help balance it out and to save taxpayer dollars. Tom, you can go ahead. What it all means is, uh, either one of our scenarios that we are presenting will yield the following tax rate increases, uh, to each of the municipalities. You'll see a two-cent increase to Hopewell Borough, a four-cent increase to Hopewell Township and a flat increase to Pennington Borough. Again, showing on the bottom that there is a zero percent increase in the total dollars that we are asking for, um, in the twenty-one, twenty-two school year.
So, uh, Mr. Colavita, can you quantify for the four cent increase for Hopewell Township? What would the average taxpayer in Hopewell Township pay with four cents more? Like the, the presentation is really helpful, but why can you translate that to dollars and cents?
Uh, so a, um, the average ta, the app, based upon the average assessment in Hopewell Township that we have at four hundred and sixty-four thousand nine hundred and forty-two dollars. It is approximately two hundred and twelve dollars for the year for a, a house priced at four hundred and sixty-four thousand dollars. For Hopewell Borough would be about eighty-six dollars and for Pennington Borough, it would be actually a decrease of about eleven dollars.
So can you clarify, um, under the current funding formula, why Hopewell Township residents have to pay two hundred and twelve dollars more? And other folks are getting a, you know, a, either a savings or a much lower increase? It doesn't seem fair. And I understand there are, there are reasons for that, but, uh, can you clarify for everyone listening tonight?
Well, I, I mean, essentially the, the main drivers to this, um, it's, you know, it's a formula divi, uh, derived by the Mercer County Tax Assessor's Office. Um, but the ratables in each of the towns drive that formula. Hopewell Township did see a hundred and eight million dollar drop in ratables. Uh, and Tom, if you shift to the, uh, the, the percent share, the percent share as generated by the Mercer County Tax Assessor's Office. Um, Hopewell Borough did see an increase in their share to six point eight three. Hopewell Township saw a decrease in their share to eighty-two, uh, point eight six percent of every dollar. Pennington Borough saw an increase to ten point three percent of each dollar. But essentially the driver for Hopewell Township is that drop in ratables, that hundred and eight million dollar drop in ratables.
Thank you.
This is just a, a, a guideline that the board used, um, as, as, to determine when and, and why do you surplus to balance your budget. Um, y- you need to be careful because surplus is something that's not, uh, recurring each year. And you don't know how much is coming each year. Um, and when you get to a number, a number that's too high, you have a difficulty replicating that number uh, on a consistent basis. Uh, best uses of surplus, um, that I've seen over the years is that you want to use it on non-recurring expenses, things that you can use, um, that you don't have to recur, that you don't have to make sure that that surplus is in the budget every year. Uh, we try to use it for our capital reserve projects. Um, because again, if you don't have, if, if you don't have the surplus, you just don't do this, the, uh, the project. If you use surplus to fund general operating expenses such as teacher salaries to a, uh, a great extent, you may have trouble replicating that number each year. Tom, you can skip ahead. This just shows a, a little bit of, of history of our capital reserve. We do maintain a five-year, uh, plan and beyond, uh, even longer. Uh, that total is, is running in the neighborhood of thirty million dollars of projects that were not addressed in the referendum. These aren't projects that are, um, urgent, but they are projects that we keep an eye on each year and we pick off, um, a few. Um, based upon our, what we have in our capital reserve and what we have going forward. We look at things that we can, that we need to do now and, and we, uh, keep an eye on things that we can push out five, six, seven, eight years. Uh, to prevent having to go to referendum. Okay, Tom, go ahead. This is a, this is a general principle that we try to use. We developed this several years ago in the finance committee. Um, as of areas where we want to keep and make sure we have funds allocated. Um, we determined that the maximum amount of surplus we wanted to use to balance our budget each year was in the two point five million dollar range as a guide. It's not a, um, hard, fast rule, but it's something that we use as a guide. Um, we do, as Dr. Smith mentioned, we are a self-insured district. We, um, what that means to, um, folks is that we don't pay premiums towards health insurance. We pay the claims. Um, so we have, we have put pieces in place where, where claims come in, we pay them and are, uh, we have stop losses in place for catastrophic claims. Uh, but we also have what's called an IBNR account, which is incurred but not received. So we have an actuary that comes up and they develop a, uh, formula to say how much we should keep in reserve uh, in case something were to go wrong with our program. And that's about two and, two point five million dollars, which we have met. We like to try to keep a two point five billion dollar deposit to our capital reserve if we can. Um, the board suggested that we keep no less than two point, uh, two million dollars in our capital reserve. Uh, and the arrow going from capital reserve deposit to excess surplus is if we are fortunate enough to have surplus in excess of two point five million dollar deposit to capital reserve, we would use some of that money to pay down our debt service when feasible, which is what we have done this year. We've actually paid down our debt service to close to next year's levels. Um, so what that means is the debt service that we promised would fall off as part of the referendum process. We're actually presenting that to you a year early. Okay? That takes us to the end, Tom.
So, uh, Mr. Colavita, thank you. That was really helpful. I want to thank you, want to thank Dr. Smith and, uh, the entire board for everything you guys are doing on our behalf and like to keep our kids educated dealing with these unprecedented times. You know, I think, uh, you know, I think the challenge we're all facing is we're living in unprecedented times. And so, you know, we have local businesses that are hoping they can, uh, keep the doors open tomorrow. We have residents that are facing, um, challenges, and I know you guys see that through, uh, dealing with parents and their kids. I guess I'd have two questions. Um, and I think overall, I think, uh, the direction you're proposing is the right one. Is there anything else in a, in the year of COVID we could do? And I saw those two budget options. Um, and instinctually, you know, the, the one that, uh, required less of a burden on taxpayers. I, um, gravitated towards because, you know, we're, we're all facing our own circumstances this year. And if we can reduce the burden for businesses, we can reduce the burden for homeowners while supporting the excellence, um, that you and the team have delivered over the last ten or twenty years that I've been here, so much the better. Um, you know, I think we're in a, in a world of empathy and a world where we have to do everything possible to reduce the burden of taxes on. You know, I think we're in a, in a world of empathy and a world where we have to do everything possible to reduce the burden of taxes on. You know, our residents, and so, you know, like, I'm hopeful that, you know, I, I like this second option. And I'd also look at the capital reserve budget a little bit and go. You know, we're working very collaboratively on some next generation solutions, and so. You know, can we take a. Speaking for myself, not on behalf of the committee, but can we take a, could we, could we take a break for a year? And say, we've been building up this reserve, this capital reserve, I understand more is always better. But is there a path wherein we could? Almost give our residents sort of a hiatus for a year, because, you know, I'm a little concerned that a four cent increase. I appreciate the 0% general operating levy increase, but a four cent increase is still a four cent increase and. And I share these thoughts not to, this is your purview, we appreciate being brought in, this is what you guys do, so. Just like to have some discussions, some thoughts about how we move forward, so I appreciate this.
Yeah, this is Deborah Seeler, I would second that approach, Kevin laid it out very succinctly. And I know here in the borough, you know, we have a huge number of community members that are using food banks and really, really suffering. And I know the borough got quite an increased last go-round, and, you know, I think. A year of a hiatus would really be helpful for, for a lot of people, for our seniors, for our businesses. For our communities that are having trouble paying their mortgages and feeding their kids. So we would, I think we would all appreciate that if that could be a consideration in this extraordinary year. But thank you for everything, and again, thank you for including us.
Mr. Kuchinsky and Ms. Stuhler, we really do appreciate your, your feedback and your input, and I think. I know that the board shares your concerns as we go through our deliberations. We will certainly take your comments under consideration as we move forward. We do have a number of elements of this budget that have been rapidly developing. And so, you know, we hope to take the chance this evening at our seven o'clock session in just a few moments here. To have a full conversation with our board, not every board member has gotten to weigh in yet on the two options that you've seen presented. And so we will be discussing this at length and, and, you know, I'm sure you'll be hearing more about that in the weeks to come, so thank you, we appreciate it. Are there any other questions? We, we are a bit limited on, oh, I'm sorry.
I don't know if you could see those, but.
Yes.
Ryan Kennedy, I think I'd hand up first and then Julie Blake.
Thank you, just to echo what everyone had said, but very appreciative of, of this new process and including the municipalities. And of everything that you guys are doing. I'll just add a little bit to what, what Kevin said, look, the, the thing that's causing tax increases in the borough and the township are not the result of your spending. It's the ebbs and flows of assessments between the towns, and that is certainly not under your control, but what I, what I do. Think would be interesting, and I heard Bob kind of allude to this, is that, you know, the, the five-year thinking, you know, you won't know what the assessments are in each town. Till next year, but you do know what, when the, when the debt falls off and to have a dialogue and, and talk with the municipalities about where their assessments are going. And find years where it is beneficial, but there are certain times when it, it hurts, stings less. To, you know, to, to adjust debt service payments, for example. And I appreciate hearing, you know, Bob say, and, you know, that, that's something you guys look at, I know it's not in your control, but we can all look at it together. And then one question for you guys, again, appreciation. You know, the, the, the places of spending that I see. Really honestly seems completely not just under control, but, you know. I'm impressed with what you're able to, to do, you know, the very small increase or decrease in administrative. You know, the tuition instruction is down at like 1%, I mean, that's phenomenal, and, and thank you for that. And I guess my question is maybe you could just take us through, you know, the, the general levy seems to still increase quite a bit, so if you could take us through just how that translates to. To cap space that you have and, and that general levy, because I, I'm, there's a disconnect in, in my ability to follow that between. You know, it connects very much to the zero increase, but to the levy levels of for which future caps will be based on. I, I don't, I don't know if I quite understand how the 1% and half percent increase of those services and spending translates to such a big increase in the general levy for, for next year's 2%.
Mr. Kennedy, do you mind if I weigh in, because actually my question is tied to yours, so we could get to it once. So first of all, I, I'd like to thank the school district. You know, Dr. Smith and Ms. Lynn Horst, your, your words really spoke to me. This is one of the hardest years I've ever experienced as both as an educator and working in the township committee, and I know what you all do. This is like so personal to me because I know that all of you are caring about kids you don't see, the virtual kids. The kids that are being touched or not being touched in terms of direct contact within face-to-face contact with. It's, it's one of the hardest experiences of my personal life, so I want to thank you just straight out, because this has just been an incredible year. Couple things, to, to Ryan Kennedy's point. I was also curious and wondering if, you know, if this year that, you know, Kevin Kuchinsky and, you know, a few of us are looking at like, this is the year not to save that capital. And kind of help out the taxpayer, because this is, we're all getting hit. And, you know, Ryan mentioned the cap. And we all know that that's, you know, if we look at that, we're playing the long game. We're playing the long game because every year that's a compound, right, it grows every year and moves. So if there is a place to put it, this is not my business, but I'm just saying that, that would be meaningful, I know for the taxpayers, not only this year, but in the long run. So that's just my two cents. And I, and I would like to ask to, you know, and, and please answer Ryan's question first. But if, I know Adam Sawicki is the finance chair, and I'd just like to ask his opinion about this, this particular budget, if he has feelings one way or another, because I know he, he has a lot of experience. This is not his first rodeo, and I'd just like to get his, his read, so thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Kennedy, Ms. Blake, we appreciate those comments. Bob, did you want to address any of the, the questions that were raised?
If Ryan could kind of repeat his question, I, I kind of just want to try to hit on what he's looking for.
Sure, so, you know, the, the, the things that you've done a really great job of keeping under control in terms of spending. Tuition and instruction, benefits, administrative costs, those are all. You know, half percent, less than a percent increases. But if you look at the, the, the general fund from year over year, it increases quite a bit. And I'm just trying to understand how that translates into the, the work you've done to keep spending under control. Into a general fund that increases so much for which, you know, future cap. Calculations will be based on, I, I would have thought next year we'd start with a much different base, considering how, you know, conservative and, 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 you know, smart you guys have been about, about spending.
Right, it's, I mean, I'm not sure how your municipal budget looks, but, but, you know, there are different ways to look at, at a school district budget, we're showing an adopted budget. To an adopted budget, you adopted and proposed, it's, it's, it shows what we adopted to what we're proposing, but it's missing out on some of the things that are in the, in the middle. So we've made adjustments to that adopted budget to accommodate certain things throughout the years, some COVID expenditures, some other, you know, we've added. Some special instructional staff during a, in a COVID environment and, and building on some of those, who are not really building on. In some cases, the adopted budget, you may be building on adjustments that were made during the year. There's also, you know, the, the levy is only a, a certain portion of our budget, there's also state aid. In our budget, and we are still one of the districts that are underfunded. So we're not getting the same amount of state aid as we might normally have gotten, I know that they promoted that we were getting, you know, 15% increase in state aid, but that was based upon. They didn't base that upon the number that they cut from us last year, so we came into the year last year having to have cut. Money from our budget, use more surplus.
Ryan, Bob, if I could just interrupt for one second, because I just want to be cognizant of the time. It, Ryan, is this the slide you were kind of alluding to?
Yeah, I, I think so, and, and, and then I know that, yes, I, I, it is, it is.
Okay, and then Adam, I don't know if you're on the line or you want to chime in kind of to, I think to Julie's point. To kind of this slide.
Sure, Tom, what I would say is, you know, compared to a few years ago, I, I think when you look at our overall state and our overall process, we're, we're in a lot better place. You know, first thing we, we really emphasized was, was operating cost growth and, you know. In prior meetings, we mentioned that when you look at our operating budget, we're going up actually about 0.4%. So, so as, as was mentioned, that's excellent. A couple of things, like, like you say, with the board, the Finance and Facilities Committee also is reviewing how we're doing this year on a quarterly basis. That's been presented to us and, and based upon where we were at halfway through the year. That's where we judge the, the use of surplus that we are projecting, that, that $3.5 billion, we, we felt comfortable with that number in terms of what we were generating. Given that we still have some uncertainties about what the rest of the year will ultimately wind up looking like. You know, just from that standpoint, you see there's two scenarios. We, we basically looked at, we generated the first one and then looked at an alternative where. We would have a greater potential to maybe have some. Tax relief next year as well due to the. The difference in the, with the additional debt service coming off. So, you know, I, I think there are two viable scenarios, we'll discuss them with the, the greater board. You know, the, those who, you know, may advocate for the, the scenario A listed there are primarily concerned with future cost growth. Those for scenario B are, are looking to match the, the general fund tax levy growth with that. You know, our operational budget requirements, so, and potentially offer tax relief.
Is there any way that, you know, you can do a little of both, I hate to interject.
No. Adam said a problem.
So it's, you know, do you, do you use it now or do you bank it and potentially use it later?
We lost you a little bit there, Adam.
Sorry about that.
But I can jump in, that's, that's part of the discussion, it's kind of where we land. One thing, and Bob, make sure I'm on the right path here, regardless of where we land up here, the increase stays the same. I mean, well, no increase, it stays zero. This year, it's just a matter of internally where do we put the, the surplus.
And, and are we correct though, that in scenario? B, $300,000 of, of cap space would remain? And that what you would base next year's cap on would be $300,000 less, and if you were to decrease that even further, it would be more cap space that you would have this year available. To carry to future years and, and a smaller amount of your general fund that would be compounded by 2% for next year's calculation? Difference between these two?
That's right.
Okay.
That, that's correct, if, if I can make one comment with that, one other thing that actually is an implication is. The timing of, that the debt service payments have to be made, so Bob, if you could elaborate, we actually looked at some alternative scenarios. Of, you know, the smaller general fund increase, but those would actually wind up with a, a, a greater tax implication this year.
Yeah, so what Adam's referring to is if we actually put more or less. If we put less surplus, surplus towards the debt, it actually would cause the tax rate to go up higher. Because our debt service is front-loaded, it, it's paid 75% in the second half of a year. Which would jack, which would cause that rate to go up, it's not a 50/50 split so that it's spread evenly, debt service is collected when it's paid. So if we were to put less surplus towards the debt, it would actually increase the tax rate.
Thank you, Mr. Colveda, we are actually running up against the seven o'clock hour and going beyond it, and we still have to incorporate a session of public comment. So we're going to have to cut things off there, we appreciate everyone's participation in this evening's meeting, and we would encourage you to reach out with any questions. Via email or call and, and, you know, to, to keep in mind that the board will continue to deliberate this evening and during the course of this week.
Thank you, President. Lynn Tors, I think we really appreciated this, this collaboration has been what makes our community stronger. I want to thank you, I want to thank Dr. Smith and Mr. Colveda for this collaboration, because together we're going to make this plan better. And just like we're working, you know, over time towards shared services and other things. Thank you for listening to us tonight, and. We appreciate the opportunity to give you some feedback and a closing comment, I think as Mr. Kennedy had said, you know. Option B. You know, would be something, it's your decision, obviously, but there's some value in this unprecedented time. That if we can create a little bit more room and space for our businesses. And our restaurants and our residents, we would appreciate it. And, and then I think we got to keep working together like there's going to be another budget, another challenge next year, so.
Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Kuchinsky. With that, we will move to public comment. Members of the public are invited to address the board on any matter for a maximum of three minutes during this portion of the meeting. When using a virtual format such as Zoom, individuals who would like to make a comment are asked to utilize the hand raise notification function. To alert the board president of your intent to speak. The board secretary will activate your ability to speak by unmuting you during public comment, you are asked to state your name, address, and municipality. In response to your comments, the Board of Education may respond or direct the superintendent to do so. The board may also opt to take the matter up at a future meeting so that the matter is researched by district administration. As an alternate method for public comment, you may also use the Google form that is attached to the meeting agenda. Public comment is now open. I am not seeing any hands raised, anyone else noticing anything there?
Just give me a second to check the Google forum, but I think we're.
Thank you.
I don't see anything.
I don't see anything either.
Okay, with that, public comment is closed. Thank you again to everyone, and I would like to request a, a motion to adjourn the meeting, please.
Still moved?
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed or abstaining? The motion carries, thank you, and board members will see you at the seven o'clock. Thanks.